Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vator. It's my privilege to welcome members of the council to this regularly scheduled city council meeting and members of the public who have taken up your time this evening to attend with us. We will officially call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM and would invite our city clerk to conduct our roll call.
Mayor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Andy Wilson?
Present.
Mark Fenison?
Present.
Joe Shai?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And Justin Olson?
Present.
Excellent. We have a full house. Exactly. Now, as is customary, we will begin with an intonation. I would invite all to please join with us. I believe that it was my privilege and honor to offer that for us, so please join. To God, our eternal Father, we are privileged to begin this council meeting with prayer and acknowledge the freedoms of our Constitution to do so. We express our gratitude for the privilege which is ours as elected officials to make decisions which would reflect the wisdom and compassion we have for the residents of this community. And would ask you to bless us with inspiration and to do so in a manner which would elevate the values and virtues that we believe are in the best interests of this community. I'm grateful for the veterans who we acknowledge in this special time of year of sacrifice for our freedoms and express to be our gratitude and appreciation for them. And we once again express our privilege to serve and to honor this country and this community and would ask you to watch over all that has been said and done this evening and to offer these thoughts in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. All right, we would now invite all to please arise for our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Shai, would you do the honors for us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed with the mayor's report. I am pleased to report that it has been an extremely contested and emotion-laden election cycle of 2015 and that we survived that process. As of present date, I extend appreciation to all who participated in the elections, particularly members of the board who successfully won those elections and individuals seated with us, Ruth Crer, who's emerged victorious from the process. And you would note that there are still two positions that remain to be decided, but that the -- all the election results will be certified by November 23rd, so we look forward to that date. I understand that there are still 14 ballots to be tabulated, so that is going to represent some anticipation, I think, for the residents of Vator. But so I just wanted to express those thoughts. In addition, I want to continuously remind the residents that those who attend this meeting, we invite you to park somewhere other than in the paved area to the north that's owned by the fire department. But I didn't see any vehicles out there, so I think that's a good sign. That's the mayor's report. Not much else to bring to your attention. So let's proceed with the agenda approval for the city council meeting for tonight. And I don't personally have any modifications to make on it. If some of you might have some, now would be the time to make note of it.
I would like to be put on the agenda down in public comment. I would like to address the council, the mayor, and the citizens of Vator.
Okay. You'd like that? Okay. It isn't necessary to add that to the agenda, but you would make note of that, Jill? Okay. Any other comments or additions? Do you have other way council action?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for November 11th or November 12th, 2013. That's written.
Okay. Heard the recommendation to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Good. Motion carries. Now the minutes approval for October 22nd.
I'd make a motion to approve October 22nd, 2015, the city council meeting.
Okay. Mr. Fenison has submitted the motion as noted. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of November, 2015, in the amount of $39,803.52.
Okay. Mr. Shai?
I second it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Got to go in steps. And Mr. Shai has submitted a motion to approve the voucher total as noted. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment.
You guys went too fast, just a second.
Yeah, I know. We're moving right along, aren't we?
Okay, well, we know we have Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
And we don't have anybody else, so.
All right. Mr. Wilson? You've got three minutes.
Dear Council Mayor and citizens of Vator, on October 8th, 2015, during a regular city council meeting, the mayor made the decision to read a defamatory email from a Vator citizen. The citizen, Mike Parsons, was not in attendance at the meeting, and therefore, the email was read by the city clerk at the direction of Mayor Ken Smith. The letter was not only incorrect, it was defamatory, offensive, and a direct assault on my character. It accused me of lying to the citizens of Vator, starting rumors and misleading the voters. None of this is true. I was not given an opportunity to read the letter prior to its reading at the meeting so I could adequately respond. Instead, the mayor felt it better to ambush and embarrass me at the meeting. I can only summarize, the mayor made this decision because he agrees with the citizen and when my attack carried for honor and digging the incumbent. As most citizens are aware, I am a longtime resident and have been dedicated and vetement with town for over 50 years. To have a citizen, in concert with the mayor, attack my character, honor, and dedication to my duty is offensive. It basically is defamatory. How someone who has only been here a few short months can make some of his accusations and know what is best for town is stunning. I believe the mayor, Mike Parsons, owe me a public apology for not only the contents of the letter, but also to the manner in which it was delivered. In conclusion, I stand by my comments as not changing the name of our fine city and hope the city, citizens of Vator, feel the same. I thank you, M.B. Wilson, City Councilman, for 31 years and era.
Okay. I feel like a heartfelt comment, and I think it's appropriate to hear that. I feel that it would only be appropriate to respond by expressing the reality that if a citizen has a desire to make a written prepared statement, it isn't really the prerogative of the mayor to say no to that individual. And if they make a request to have that statement read, they are a resident of the city of Vator, during that public comment period, the mayor has no say either way to say yes or no. It's his right and privilege. And so, we invited the city clerk to read that letter, and it wasn't in concert in an effort to humiliate you. He expressed the thoughts that were in his heart and mind. Certainly, you may want to take offense at that, but you just happened to step in. Mr. Wilson just read the statement condemning the letter that was read that you authored. So, Mr. Parsons happens to be here, and I've just explained that he has a right to have that read as a matter of public record during the public portion of this meeting. So, I personally extend no apologies on behalf of that, and I personally have the information that he noted, and I believe he's accurate. So, that's my response. Yes. Now, do we have any others? Okay. We do have a comment from a member of the public. Would the council prefer? Yes, please.
So if I -- do you like Mike to read?
Yeah.
You will read it at every public meeting?
At the city council meeting during the public portion of the council meeting. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And you can experiment with that. Send in a letter. Find out. So, let's proceed with our city council meeting. With the next day's item of the city business. Oh. We have the -- did you just sign up for public comment?
Yeah, is it over already?
The council had -- we hadn't reached the conclusion of it, so.
I think, under the circumstances, he has a right to defend himself.
I don't know what I'm defending against, but I'd love to talk.
Well, all right. Would the council prepare to listen to Mr. Parsons? Proceed.
Better today than next week.
Yeah.
Just get it done.
All right. So, the only reason that I sent a letter is because I wasn't in town. The stuff in the letter wasn't intended -- it wasn't about the argument over there, because we never had an argument, as the newspaper said. The stuff in the letter that I was trying to point out was, one, you lied. Straight up lied to my face. Yes, you show me that email. That's the very first email from the Department of Transportation. And you've also had and seen the other emails that showed that it was only $8,000. But I don't know if it's just you forgot or whatever it was, but you chose not to share that information with anyone else and just put out the $30,000. You also knew that in that letter, I offered to pay the $8,000. But no, you didn't share that information with anybody else. So, to lie, it means give false information. What you did was false information. Now you have a billboard out there that says, "Keep Vator," and I'm slandering you or whatever. That's a bunch of crap, because you knew that the email came and it was only $8,000, but as a city council person, you decided to put that on the back burner and only share the first email for $30,000 so that you would have it go your way. I truly believe, and I've talked to lots of people out there, they wanted the name change. But Andy Wilson told me it's going to be $30,000, and we just don't have that money. That is what I heard all the time with everybody I talked to. The majority of people want the name change, but it was going to cost too much money, because you lied. And as a city council person, people are supposed to be able to trust you. That's it. That's the whole situation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That's the purpose of public comment. Thank you both for your passion and your perspective. Let me add, in case there are residents who are concerned about what it means to be to defame someone's character. When an individual runs for public office, the threshold, the legal threshold for defamation of character is way above anything that we've heard. You acknowledge and accept the reality that there are going to be people who might take the difference of opinion. And you can hire your private attorneys if you'd like to, as you claim it, but in my legal experience, there isn't anything that approximates any defamation of character going on here. So, but we're all free to exercise our personal rights to have our voice heard. With that, the mayor's.
Mr. Mayor, did you read this from the MRSC?
You have it? I would love to read it. Absolutely. Fantastic. Thank you. So, let's proceed with our city council meeting. The next agenda item is the city business. Item number one is council will consider the resolution 19-2015, which is the interlocal agreement with Lewis County that pertains to the meter reading services that I know that you've been aware of, that we've been trying to hammer out with Lewis County. And so, the document that you should have in your possession will enable us to finally approve that memorandum of understanding. So I would await council action on that matter.
I'd make a motion. I think this is all a bunch of picky stuff, so. But I still will make a motion to approve resolution number 19-2015 authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Lewis County, Washington, for meter reads services and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement substantially in the form attached to the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flynn, for setting in motion that motion to approve resolution 19-20-15 as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shai.
I didn't say it all of it yet. I don't know if either one of us finished our sentence.
That was seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay. You got it seconded. Now's an opportunity for the council to have extra commentary or verbiage on it.
Well, but all I can see by reading through here is that the county just wants to get some money from them.
They do. It's going to require an uptake in our waste utility bills. But we're going to ensure that the residents know the reason for it, to the extent that we can on your little sewer bills. It'll raise the bill by approximately how much?
A little less than a dollar.
Okay. About 90 cents, because.
How much was that?
About 90 cents.
I believe it's a little less than a dollar.
We have, well, we have an action. This is an opportunity to hear publicly. Go ahead, yes.
Can't we absorb that? The bi-monthly charge? Can't we absorb that in our general fund, draw some money off so that we're not -- it would more increase on that meter? Because once we get the thing back, we'll be paying for that anyway, right? Through the agreement, unless, when we get our water back.
I don't.
No, we can't take anything out of the general fund for the sewer. Everything that's sewer-related has to be paid for out of sewer rates, utility rates only. We cannot take money.
But don't we have a water fund that we're paying into?
No.
That maintains that that's Lewis's?
Lewis County has all the money relating to the water system, not us.
Thank you.
What this represents is kind of a double bill, because the county is reading the meters as it is. They're just now extending the charge or the pay of that employee onto the shoulders of the residents of Vator. I mean, he's going to read the water meters regardless. That's why I'm sure Mr. Flynn noted that we're being nitpicked here. And I think that it's only appropriate, the residents realize when they see that 90 cent approximately, a raise in their thing, that they understand that it's Lewis County that is forcing us. And we have fought this for several months with our attorney.
It's a big guy being a bully to the little guy.
Exactly.
Because they, when they took over the water system, you all remember what we used to pay? It was $49 every two months, and we got 4,000 gallons of water included in that charge. County took it over and it went up to $85 every two months, and we get nothing, just for the privilege of them sticking a meter in front of our house. So when I saw this, I don't agree with this kind of garbage. This is garbage. And that's what they're, they're just treating it like that. I'm not politically correct. I just say it like it is. I think they're just trying to stiff the little guy here.
And I would hope that the residents don't like it. Then feel free to communicate with the county commissioners and let them know that you don't appreciate that. But ultimately, our objective is to get that system back, and that will eliminate that nitpicking little expense. So, we're working hard to qualify to get that system back, and then we'll manage it differently.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the paid staff for looking into this so closely. Originally, the county was going to charge us for the meter reads in Enchanted Valley as well.
Yes.
And then after closer observation by our staff, they realized that the county cut our bill in half that they were going to charge the city.
Yeah. Well, thank you for making note of that.
Thank you for looking into that and paying attention.
So, well, with that, is there any other council input or feedback? If not, then let's put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion's carried. Wonderful. Okay. Now, the next item is the planning committee and park board vacancies and assignments. Let's see. I'm going to keep it work here. A lot has been happening. I can tell you that, just so you're aware, we have received a letter dated November 9th from Mrs. Christine Cole. She is a member of the Vator City Planning Committee. She's a resident in the Enchanted Valley, the five-acre zone. And she submitted a letter to the city on that date requesting that her participation of the planning committee be terminated effective the date of that letter, immediately. And I will personally ensure that the council members, if you would like to see a copy of that letter, can do so. The letter contains a number of comments and statements which I think are inaccurate, condescending, demeaning, sarcastic, and cynical. But I won't share the contents with it in this public meeting, but would invite anyone who would like to read it to do so. I officially accept her resignation and would invite you to consider this letter which I prepared announcing her resignation. And to, because guidelines of the planning committee require that any resignation such as this be conducted at the next earliest city council meeting and that it be written. So I would invite you to confirm my recommendation that she be terminated and the members of the planning committee have natural request.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, we would.
I'll put a motion up that we confirm her, that we confirm her resignation as of 11/12/14, and that would be Mrs. Cole's resignation.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion to approve that recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any commentary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay. I'll call your attention to a second letter that I'd like council to consider. This is kind of a fast-moving situation. But I'll just share the contents of this letter which I drafted earlier today. As you're probably aware, members serving on the Vator, the city of Vator Park Board do so at the discretion of the mayor and the Vator City Council. Members of the park board may be released at any time without cause, of which action must be submitted in writing by the mayor for council confirmation. After careful consideration, I have come to the conclusion that at this time, it is appropriate and necessary to make two changes on the current city of Vator park board. I feel it's in the best interest of the park board to release Jason Daly and Richard Bryce who have served as park board members. They've served the board and the community well during their tenure, and I would ask that you confirm this recommendation at the earliest opportunity. In conjunction with this action, I'm pleased to report that I have identified an individual who's expressed great interest in serving the city of Vator as a member of the park board. The individual is Mr. Mike Parsons. And Mr. Parsons is with us. I appreciate you being here. I've interviewed Mr. Parsons at length and can affirm that he is qualified after his ordinance guidelines to serve on the board and has the skills and resources to make a significant contribution to the betterment of our community. I therefore recommend him to you for your confirmation as a new member of the city of Vator Park Board and to confirm the dismissal of Jason Daly and Richard Bryce on it. And that I will, we would then still have one vacancy on the park board and that I will engage in the appropriate efforts to fill that remaining vacancy. So, that's the agenda item that I would invite council to consider for appropriate action.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, we would need a motion for both of those.
I'll put a motion on the table that we approve the resignation or the release of Jason Daly and Richard Bryce from the park board, and I would ask that we affirm Mike Parsons as a new member of the park board.
Okay. We have a motion to confirm the release of Jason Daly and Richard Bryce as members of the park board and approval of the confirmation of Mr. Parsons as a member of the park board. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Any other commentary? There are none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion's carried. Thank you very much. I think that's a significant improvement and will energize and vitalize the board. And I would invite Mr. Parsons, we're going to swear in two new members of the planning committee tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock here at City Hall. And if your schedule will allow it, we'd invite you to come and we'll officially swear you in tomorrow. Okay? And on that note, I would like to ensure that the council is aware that tomorrow we have a public hearing for the planning committee, which will be short a member, but we will still have four members, so we'll have a forum to conduct that public hearing. And it'll be tomorrow at 5:00. And so, if any of you are interested, it has to do with the marijuana issue affecting the community. So, come and participate and feel so inclined. Item number three.
Mayor, can we do a swap of three and four? I forgot to grab that paperwork, so I need to run and grab that off my desk. So we swap three and four, so I apologize.
Will the council approve jumping to item four and then coming back to item three?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No deal.
Thank you.
So, let's jump to the council discussion related to changes to the contract for Lewis County Sheriff's Office services. You should have in your hand the letter.
I have read contracts that they proposed, and with all the years in service I've been in the city here, is that I think what they're often written is a very good deal, and, but we went through a lot of money that's law important around here, and we don't have the type of money for, and the equipment that you have to buy and everything goes on with it. Myself, I would even make a motion that we accept the sheriff's thing here at $72,000 myself. I mean, I just went through this before any of you ever came in the town. And I was very fortunate when I was mayor of one of my terms, that we had federal grant money and I had a police chief and I had three other officers on plus, and it was all fake. But we don't get that anymore.
Okay.
It's hard to find it.
Yes.
You follow my people.
Well, okay. You heard Mr. Wilson express his. You heard Mr. Olson express his supportive commentary. He has submitted a motion to accept this proposal. And that is the essence of what the sheriff's representatives, Rob Snouse and Wes Reddwell, have came to us and they presented this to us as a proposed budget total for 2016. And this represents one fourth of a normal budget for a city of ours. Obviously, we deal with realities that we're only getting half the time coverage, but it is flexible and it, I think we're getting a high-quality product. So, we don't have to agree on everything, but I share your perspective.
I am very glad you said that because here comments in town, oh, I see them parked, parked here and there. Well, they don't realize why a police officer sometimes parks. He parks for a reason. He's looking for something that was going on or whatever, and they don't understand that and not saying anything bad about those type of people, but they don't know law enforcement.
Well said. I think in the last election cycle, you probably noted that there's been a call for a restoration of our City of Vader Police Department. Obviously, comments like that don't represent an accurate understanding and awareness of the budget constraints that we've got at this moment in time. So, we get our water system back and the function of the community with the growth to provide the resources.
Here we go, two more years. That's going to be good for us. Why not?
Well said. So, there is a motion before the council. Do we have a?
I'll second that.
I noted that. Do we have a second from Mr. Plin? And have additional commentary?
Yes, I think it's really important for people to realize on this contract, that's less money than we paid in our contract last year.
Is that over there?
And every other, Winlock was fighting major increases on their police, and Toledo went through the same thing. And here we are, getting good coverage. They were fighting to get the coverage we got, we have, and they couldn't get it. So, this town should be very pleased and very thankful that we have the coverage we do for that price. I think everybody will admit they've seen a major improvement in the coverage that we have versus what you see, what we used to have.
If we had had to deal with our own police department on the horrific murder of that baby boy, we'd have been bankrupt for, probably irrecoverable financial hardship. So, we have a comment from Random Republic this time?
Good question. I was amazed at the cost of just maintaining and insuring squad cars. Do you all remember what it was? If we had our own police department, we'd have to insure and maintain a squad car? And I was just blown away by how much that cost, and I don't remember what figure it was.
Well, there's nothing cheap about maintaining insurance and coverage for law enforcement and vehicle in particular. Okay. Well, with that, seeing, appearing no additional commentary, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion's carried by the committee of council that supported this motion. Now, let's jump, bank up to item three. It's a fairly straightforward issue. Council to consider the Nortech pay request for the first installment of their pay for the sites who are project, they're in the midst of. I know that you're familiar enough with how these contracts work. They're asking for their first installment. Correct me if I'm misstating something on that.
That's all correct.
So, I would await council action.
I'll put a motion forward that we approve payment as noted.
Okay. Mr. Plin has submitted a motion to approve the payment as noted, but should be noted that it's $16,503 in one cent. Are you okay with that, Mr. Plin?
Well, they have here the subtotal of seventeen, less five percent retained. We should say the whole thing. The subtotal of seventeen thousand, three hundred and five dollars, sixty-eight cents, less the five percent retained is on a base bid of eight hundred and two dollars and sixty-eight cents, giving us an amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and three dollars and one cent.
And so, the public is aware, and for disclosure and transparency, all of this is grant stuff that's already been approved and is available from the city.
That's one of those grants that we don't get anymore. This is a grant that the people got, take advantage of. It didn't cost them anything.
Yes. So, all right. Well, then, do we have a? Thank you very much, Phil. Then, we need council commentary. Got a two of them? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay? Period. At this time, it will be our privilege to engage in an official public hearing related to public comments regarding the ad valorem city property tax rate 2016. This is an annual requirement that we do as council considers whether or not we will accept the city's or the state's authorization to increase property tax. And you're required to have a public hearing on that topic. So, I'm going to adjourn.
We're supposed to have a motion, I found out, to do that starting and stopping.
Every year, you have to be reminded of such things. Do we have a motion to engage in a public hearing for ten minutes or so?
Make a motion. We'll make a motion that we engage in a public hearing for the tax rates of 2016.
Property tax. Okay. Okay, Mr. Olson, has submitted a motion to engage in a public hearing for how long?
Ten minutes.
For ten minutes for public comment relating to the ad valorem city property tax rate 2016. Do we have a six?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Plin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. So, I will temporarily adjourn this council meeting. We will begin the ten minute of public comment on the, as described in the motion, which will begin at 6:50, 41 p.m. Okay. In order to initiate this, I know that there have been residents who came in and asked for information so that they might comment. Did we have any?
I want to find out.
Asking for information relating to that topic, but I don't see any of them here. So, there it is. If you have any questions or, not questions, this isn't, this is your opportunity to share thoughts, concerns, or observations you might have about council's consideration of raising your property taxes.
How much? They asked me if I had anything to do with this. Do you want me to make some clarification?
Yes.
Okay. Every year, we have to go through training about this because it's very complicated. But basically, there are several taxing districts that can affect one piece of property. And one of the taxing districts is the city. The city has the ability to tax property values for monies to be used for city administration and other services throughout the city. Other taxing districts might be cemetery district, a fire district, a local hospital, schools. So, there's lots of different reasons to have other taxing districts. The portion of your taxes that come from the city are right now set at, as of 2015, the levy rate is set at 2.79045 and on and on and on per thousand dollars of value of your real and personal property. That ensures the city to receive 70,985.31 is how much is billed out to the taxpayers on the city's behalf. If everybody pays their taxes, that's how much the city gets. The city splits that 78% to the current fund, which pays for your police and your general administration. And then the other 22% goes to your street fund. That's the way the city has it set up right now. You can change, city council can change that if they choose, but 22% of that goes towards keeping your streets up. And so, every year, the city is allowed to increase a maximum of 1% over the previous year. So, our current levy rate brings us in 70,985. So, that would be 709.85 would be 1%. That's the most that a city is allowed to increase in one year. The, however, if the city has not increased every year at 1%, they can save up that amount. So, it's called a banked capacity. So, if, let's say in 2005, you didn't, the city chose not to increase the tax rate, they can save that 1% to use at another time. So, so far, up to this point, the city has banked 4.96%. So, the most the city could request would be 5.96%. So, that's the 4.96 bank capacity plus the 1% for this year. So, that's the most that the city could request. So, that would be about $3,500, somewhere in that ballpark if the city wanted to use all of that. Let's see. Unfortunately, the county does not have our current data sheets available yet. So, I gave you one from last year that at least gives you a ballpark. So, at least gives you some of the breakdown of what the information looks like for the city. So, the city, I guess the council gets to decide if they need some more revenue or not. And if they do, then they have this as an opportunity. One of the people were pointing out that if you compare our city rate to the other cities that are around here, that our rate is the highest among all of them. And I said, that is very true, and that is because the city doesn't have any business to fund all the things that other cities have, business, taxes and things, coming in to fund all the things that we have to pay for as a city. Since we don't have any businesses, then the only way we can fund the city is through the tax rate. Yeah. Yeah. So, I know the council has been working hard to try to keep the costs of different things, like the building permitting and things like that, even trying to make sure that the rates and costs that are set for those will pay for themselves, basically, pay for the amount of time and costs like to the building officials, that the permit should pay for that. And so, we're working on making sure that that's well balanced so that those things aren't additional costs to those who don't use them. So, just those who need those services will be paying for them. Do you guys have any questions?
I'd like to quickly insert here, as you're probably aware, that like City Clerk mentioned, we happen to have the highest of some of the communities in the southwest Lewis County area, but you don't have the document in front of you. We're not that much higher. We're all within one half of 1% from the others. And all of those other communities have businesses that generate the sales tax that enable them to organize. Although I will always throw out the, also, the, we have, this doesn't count the fire district and the school district taxes which are added to ours. And we have, unfortunately, some of the highest collective taxes just because of what I believe is the short sight of effort of some residents in our community who voted against our school. And so, now, we're part of the Castle Rock School District, which has the second highest tax total added to ours in all of the southwest Washington. So, in case any aren't aware of that, I think it's important to understand. And I would then note to the council that, did they get to the budget proposal? They should have had that. And unless something's changed, it's my recommendation that there not be an increase in our property tax. In case some of you happen to think that our job is to raise rates, I'm extremely sensitive as such, but I hope it's noted as I, and that if you hear that, you will share that with your neighbors and friends. I've gone through an election cycle where some of that information has not been passed along to your neighbors and friends. So, we still have some time.
The 700 number and the 3,500 number, that is what my property taxes were for 1%? Both have 3,500?
No, no, no. That's the total amount that the city would receive if we increased the rate by 1%. The total the city would receive from all the taxpayers put together is 709.
And if you went to save?
And if you went up to the, yeah, it would be about 3,500.
So, roughly $1 per citizen in your household, give or take. Different because of property tax. But a dollar is a dollar, dude. Just annually, a dollar.
That's right.
For you.
That's right.
Just to put in perspective.
And for every dollar we don't pay, it's $1 that's not in the street paving fund. So, it's a give and it's a take. You complain about potholes, then pay another dollar. You have $700 that the council can put in your paving fund. So, then we get what we pay for.
Well, Mayor, I'll agree with you, Mayor, because there's a lot of people in this town going through a tough year.
Absolutely.
And I know a buck is a buck, but it sure would be nice to say that we didn't have to raise it because the city is dealing with surplus, and it'd be nice to pass that on to the citizens.
But the grants that Joe did, you know, I mean, that's another avenue to give.
That's right. And as long as we maintain the surplus and we follow all the rules, then we're, we have access to all these grants. So, we have to, we have to make sure we balance that also. Because if we get ourselves in trouble financially, we don't qualify for grants. So, we want to make sure we stay in a position that we qualify for free money. I think everybody likes to be in that position.
We are. Right? So, obviously, we're somewhat sensitive here because I know, my name is on a number of billboards that were blatantly false, claiming misguided leadership. This city is as financially stable as any community in all of Lewis County and more so. And we have the surplus that enables us to have matching funds to apply for these grant funds, which we hope we'll get. When will we find out?
Next week.
Next week. So, obviously, for four months, I drove around this community looking, and maybe I'm a little hypersensitive, but I think you would all be in that situation. I think that our city has been fiscally and financially responsible in ways that have exceeded the last 40 years in City of Vader. We are poised to engage in some dramatic improvements. We just stay the course. Now is not the time for change of leadership. We'll know on November 23rd if this change that has been so fervently demanded happens. So, sorry.
The old adage of being penny wise and dollars foolish applies to it. I work very hard for my money like most people do. I've never made much money, but I respect people on tight budgets. But if we want businesses to come when we get our water and the, we have to have respect for the people in town. And then, can you give us a little insight, because I've been here less than five years, what shape was the city in financially 10 years ago? Because I received a lot of the information about the school being lost because of you, and you weren't the mayor, and even if you were, you couldn't get rid of the school because that's another government branch. But anyway, what shape vaguely, whatever you want to share with us, was the city in financially 10 years? financially ten years ago?
I can tell you that unbeknownst to the world, the city of Bader was teetering on financial collapse because of the, what eventually was discovered in 2009, that bills had not been paid for four years. They've been paying the late fees. By that, I mean, public employee. And so, this city was teetering on financial ruin. And since 2009, we have recovered, offset that failure to pay those bills, and now are operating in the black and have had two straight years of financial findings for you all. Thanks to the city council members who have integrity and some competence. And so, I tip my hat all of you, and to our city clerk. So, I was about to answer your question.
I would like to interrupt you a little bit, but when I left office as mayor in 2003, we were in the black. And then Mr. Chastain started in 2000, January of 2004, and then Mr. Smith, Mayor Smith, excuse me, started going up. And the city was starting to get out of the red and everything else, and here we are today. We stayed here in the black. But in 2003, we had money, and we looked in the records to find that out. And then in 2004, in 2004, when he was...
2008.
I mean, 2008, four years later, he took office and then, but things were bad in that year.
It all began to go south when the state discontinued the license plate of revenue come to the city. They turned the tap off over a four to five-year period, went from sixty-eight thousand dollars a year down to nothing. That is when the bills started to be hard to pay. And you can point right to that, to the big, to the crisis that we dealt with in 2009. So, now, we were, had ten minutes allocated. Last call for comments for the public relating to the ad valorem property tax. Okay? With that, seeing no additional comments, I would declare a public hearing closed. And now it'd be the council's perfect opportunity to act on the input feedback provided, will they discuss in 2015.
Can you give me a time?
Yes, at six fifty-five PM. All right, we'll proceed with the agenda. The last item is an executive session. We will, again, adjourn this council meeting to consider, to engage in an executive session to consider the selection of a site for the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. This executive session will last for ten minutes. And I would adjourn this meeting temporarily at six fifty-two PM. We will come back in ten minutes, and at which time, if you desire to stay, you will hear the council's action that may emerge. Reconvene at the city council meeting at seven eleven PM. And council engaged in conversation, no decisions were made in that executive session. I find that as a matter of public record. However, I would advise the council now to consider discussion relating to the property that was the topic of discussion in the executive session. It relates to the acquisition of the property south of the important park jail. And would advise the council to engage in a public comment at this time.
I would say that according to what we heard, the original objections presented talked about digging cores fifteen foot deep and a lot of other garbage. And I agree with the conclusion to that scientist saying that it's very unlikely there's going to be an oil tank there. And for the other problems, he suggested taking four shovel-deep cores, about eight inches, twelve inches deep. Five cores.
Six to twelve inches.
Yeah, six to twelve. That's about a shovel. And have those tested and go from there. And that, did that lower the cost to twelve to fourteen hundred dollars?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred, yeah, twelve to fourteen hundred dollars. That's still within an acceptable range of the monies we have for purchase. And I, my recommendation is that we would go ahead with it and do the minimum amount. The other things they asked for were just way out, way off the charts. That was crazy.
Okay. Other council comments? Do we have a, we do have a comment from a member of the public, the Park Board chairman.
I'm just curious, where did this come up, that there was an underground tank there? Because in those days, they didn't have underground tanks. They were all gravity fed.
It was a missed conclusion. We'll just leave it at that.
That's a good question. A lot of misinformation has percolated about this community, doesn't it? It's fascinating. But, okay, so, I believe that, given the fact that there is some urgency, because we have a sixty-day window for the council to decide whether to proceed with the acquisition of that property, and understanding that there ought to be that environmental analysis conducted, I'd hope that the council would engage in a motion to...
I...
Mr. Wilson.
I would second one.
Well, was that a motion?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay.
I didn't say motion, but I'll make a motion that we accept the first criteria of making five shovel-deep cores, eight inches to twelve inches deep, and have those tested and move ahead with it.
Okay.
At twelve to fourteen hundred dollars.
Consider that a motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to accept the strategy to engage in several core samples and will negotiate the price that's consistent with the twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollar fee and in furtherance of that consummation of the acquisition of that property. Okay? Did that capture your motion?
It sure did.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just needed a clarification. Are we saying that we're going to go ahead with the purchase and we'll do the testing as well? Or we're going to do the testing and wait for the results in order to make the purchase?
We're going to make the purchase and move ahead.
Okay.
That was the motion. And the reason is, in the scientist's recommendation, she said if we did find something, we'd have to bulldoze two inches of soil off and haul it away. That would be the solution. And she also said it would be very unlikely that we would find the contaminant they're looking for. So, we can just move ahead.
Okay. And you understood that modification that is for, towards the purchase of the property and then testing in conjunction or simultaneously, if you would. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Wilson. All right. Additional comments, concerns? Members of the council? All right, hearing this, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you. We just cleared a major hurdle in the expansion of the Bader City Park in the heart of this community. So, I commend the city council for that action. Once again, we're inching forward and improving quality of life in this community. At that, I would declare this city council meeting adjourned at seven eighteen PM.